Good evening. It's seven o'clock. We have a quorum. We'll call the planning board a meeting to order. First up for general information is Mr. Eisner.
Do I need to stand at the microphone?
Please, I can watch it again here from there.
Okay. Anyhow, I just have two things I want to let you, make you aware of. Item number one is I have, I brought before you a preliminary, very small subdivision for Tudran on Breckenridge Road a month or two ago.
Yes.
And we're getting close to being able to bring that forward as a final definitive subdivision. Want to let you know that.
Good.
Item number two, I am building a very large garage on my business property on Route 9. It is not intended for business at this time. I feel like sooner or later it's going to get to you guys that I'm building this building. So I just wanted to put it out front that it's happening and it's, right now it's for...
So we can start streaming you now?
Yeah, if you want, feel free. But if at some point I get a tenant or whatever, then I have to come back before the board and show you plans of parking and drainage and all that stuff before I can use it for business.
Please plead relief.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna, I know, I'm gonna plead that I know I can do it if I need to, but right now it's not intended for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Couple of, just to keep Bill up and we did get at, boy, this echo was awful. We did get, at the last meeting, Bill, you missed it, we voted to put both the moratorium...
Can we turn off that?
There we go. That's better.
There's no microphone.
Now there's no, now there's no voice out there at all. Anyway, at the last meeting, we voted to put both, because I think we're getting close on the medical marijuana, about the medical, the recreation marijuana zoning by law. So we voted to put both the moratorium and the bylaw on the fall town meeting and vote on whichever one would find out to be appropriate. Table one and vote on the other one.
Okay. Yeah, I did watch the meeting. I think that's, that's a good plan. Is David Nixon here tonight? When do we have to have text to you to post the warrant?
October 3rd.
October 3rd? Okay, so that is after our next meeting? Day after.
Our next meeting on the 2nd. Okay, that's fine.
So we cannot defer to our September, to our October?
I'll, I'll reschedule a public hearing for the Tuesday before the town meeting. And...
What did you say, October 3rd?
Yes.
Okay, that's the date. We're in September. October 3rd is the Wednesday.
Correct. We meet on the 2nd.
Meet on the 2nd. So...
Whatever update Susan has, we should be open for the 3rd. And the public hearing will be on the 16th. Town meeting is the 18th, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're all set. All the public hearings on the 16th and everything will be good. And we did get another request for a zoning change. And this is from David Nixon, his town administrator. And this is to see the town to vote to him in Section 5, subsection 5.4.1 relating to parking. By adding the sentence, municipal projects are exempt from parking requirements enumerated in this section. So we'll add that to the agenda for not for the public hearing, for the warrant for the zoning amendments. And we're required to put that on and see what action the planning board takes with the public hearing.
Who's presenting it at the town meeting?
I would imagine...
David, who's, who's gonna make the presenter? Because there's certain questions when you stay municipal. I noticed that the, the grammar school...
That is not a topic for tonight.
No, no, but I just wanted to make a point so that they're aware of the fact that at the grammar school, there are 50 automobiles there. You may not want 50 automobiles in a different thing, but sometimes the school may need it. So when you ask for a blanket exemption, we'll be careful.
We'll, we'll discuss that at the public hearing. That's not a topic for tonight. This is, this is the article. There's a way to be presented. And they'll have to, they'll have to address it at the meeting. Let's see. For that, if you have nothing else for general information, Mr. Strongwell.
Good evening.
Just for information, this meeting was not posted as a joint planning board selection, select board meeting. But we do have an item on the agenda to briefly, to review the site plan reviews for Library and Senior Center. So this is not going to be a big, long discussion item. We'll answer some general, we'll answer general questions and stuff like that. But as far as a long discussion on the Senior Center Library, it wasn't properly posted because we didn't even know about it. Said what was in the newspaper. So just so everybody realizes that.
I know, David, Phil had reached out to you last week also. And I just got back to you today, just, you know, giving you an email of what we had expected. We just want to have, and having people in the room, just maybe some direction. You know that the vote was taken three to two to reduce the size of the building. So we're looking for some direction. We instructed the OPM to start working on and Colliers to work on to reduce the size of the building. So I just, you know, between everybody wondering, well, where do we go next? I just wondered what the planning board had for us.
I could give you some general information. I know I was watching the select board meeting when it was, vote was taken. And it was a number of eight, the project was 800 square feet shy of parking. I don't know where that number came from because the last calculation I had, it was about 4,000 square feet shy, not 800. So I don't know where the 800 square foot number came from. But, said with that, that the building is reduced by 2,000 square feet. If my 4,000 square feet is anywhere near correct, now meets parking. Okay? And the parking lot theoretically wouldn't even have to be changed because it would qualify, it would meet the parking requirements of the Senior Center and Library. So it wouldn't be, I mean, I don't want to say there'll be no redesign. It might be a little, depending how the building is reshaped, it might be a little bit of changing in the entrance or whatever it might be. But there would not be a new parking lot designed required because the reduction in building would take care of the problem.
And we do not have to have a new application?
Correct. Because that would just be continuous. Pardon?
I didn't hear what she asked.
Oh, she...
Go ahead.
She asked it to be a new application. I said, "No, it's a continuation."
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it would just be, look, if you give us an idea tonight, well, actually, we do need an idea tonight because it was the last meeting, there was cancer, was cancer for lack of a quorum, was continued tonight. So we do need to have some kind of an idea when you would want to meet again so we could just put this meeting off until that time. Okay?
If you want my two cents, I'll throw it in. I think if, if the project is compliant with zoning, there'd be no planning basis for turning it down.
Yep. There is, that's, that's a good point. Site plan approval, I want to give this an explanation. Site plan approval is a special permit process. Emphasis on the process. Site plan approval is not something that the planning board has authority to say no to because they don't like the project. We have an attorney general decision that's, planning, site plan approval used to be an approval process, not a special permit. It was always required that it be approved by, by four out of five members. However, the appeal process was extremely convoluted and it put both the agreed party and the developer in a horrible situation. You didn't appeal the planning board decision to the courts. You waited until the building permit was issued and the agreed party had 30 days to appeal. So I will use, for example, Mount, Mount Frarns Mall was approved two years ago to tear down the Burger King and Old Florence Savings Bank buildings. It still has not received a building permit to my knowledge. So roughly every three weeks, the agreed party, I'm just gonna use three weeks because to be safe with 30 days, would have to contact the building inspector and say, "Has a building permit been issued?" Has a building permit been issued? They would be doing that for two years. Mr. Nygaard would be mighty sick of listening to this person or a party, but that's, would have been the law. And we had that happen a couple of times. Now the developer is put in a far worse situation. They're lining up all these contractors to get built. Only to find out, we've got our building permit, 20 days into the building permit process, there's an appeal. Stop all the work. So everything that they've been lined up with is at a halt and they can do nothing until this whole process is, is continued through the ZBA. And then once the ZBA makes a decision, now they can go to the court. So it could be many, many years for this thing to finally be settled. Under the special permit process, it is much cleaner. The planning board approves, you have 20 days to appeal. If you file your appeal on the 21st day, too bad. And that has been upheld time and time again by the courts. So both the agreed party and the developer have a very definitive timeframe on the special process. That's why we put the special process in strictly for the appeal period. The attorney general, when we put that in, gave us in writing, "We approve the process, but be aware that you only have authority over zoning issues. If the project meets zoning, you are required to approve it." You do not say, "It's not a special permit process. Well, we don't think it fits in with the neighborhood. We don't like this. We don't like that." No, that's not the deal. If it meets zoning, you're required to approve it, like Mr. Dwyer said. But that's only for the site plan approval. So, any idea when you may want to continue this, Mr. Reedie?
November 20th.
November 20th? You gonna bring the turkey? Better believe it.
What was the reason for the delay? It wasn't posted properly by us?
No.
We posted, we posted, set continuation, public hearing on application for the proposed new Hamlet Library and Senior Center, set continuation date only.
Correct.
So that's it? That we're setting the continuation date?
November 15th to the, to November 20th.
Well, at the meeting, at the meeting when we, when the meeting was canceled and it was...
Continued it for one week to set a new date?
And with the discussion I thought was gonna take place.
No, no, no. That was why it was continued because of 3,000, 2,000 square foot reduction. They didn't know what they were going to do and they wanted some clarification. Yes?
I heard clarification. Thank, oh, I'm sorry. I heard clarification. This doesn't seem to be on.
It's on.
Okay. I heard clarification. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. On that, if, your sense was that if the building is reduced, there shouldn't be any issues with it passing the two to one. I think everybody would like to know that, or, or get a sense from the other two dissenting voters that that's also what is on there?
Excuse me.
Yes.
I never said that I was a dissenter.
Oh, okay.
That's a misstatement. Thank you.
Okay.
I did.
Okay. So I guess I'm asking you both that you would see the site plan as something that should get approval if that building was reduced to that size? That's my...
For me, that's a reasonable statement.
Thank you.
We should get my vote. Whether it's a reasonable statement, I don't know.
Um, do you have a comment to that?
Wait till the meeting.
It's for a surprise.
So just, I mean, obviously, there are a lot of people here tonight and we understand that we were kind of landing on one of your regularly scheduled meetings. But I think, I understand what Joyce is asking, but I think part of the conversation we had at the select board meeting that I know is shared by an awful lot of people involved with the projects is that there's so much misinformation going around. I mean, I think that the hearing, the site plan review specific meeting is one thing. What some of us were really hoping to accomplish was without necessarily deliberation or anything would be, would, to have the opportunity for planning board, select board, and the respective building committees and OPMs to make sure that everybody was dealing with the same set of information. Just like you said, Jim, I mean, numbers are flying around, square footage is flying around. Select board took a vote with a, I'm not gonna call it arbitrary. I know there was a slot behind it, but with a very specific set of, you know, square footage. The OPMs did continue the works after the last meeting. I know that they had a meeting as recently as today. My understanding is that they've come up with something that potentially could actually work with the existing square footage for the site plan. So I don't think anybody wants to waste time. We all collectively want to move forward. So trying to figure out the best way to make that sharing of information occur. And I, I'm sorry, Municipal Building Committee, I would throw in the mix as well. Again, and the reason I say that is because I would think that when we're weighing our options, if there are any options, if we're weighing them, we want to make sure we understand the total impact to the projects in terms of time and ultimately that will lead to cost. That's where I think there's an awful lot of misinformation, that people aren't really clear on what a certain direction means. So how, how could we get there in terms of just getting everybody's questions out? Because you, it sounds like tonight is not the night you want to do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, even if you had the drawings tonight...
Oh, yeah, that would, no, we don't really have any drawings.
So, and even if you had it tonight and we had been posted, it's like, we're gonna look at them and do some, you know, it's probably more than you can do in a reasonable hour or so meeting. So if you have, the OPMs have a combined drawing with dimensions that, that we could look at. And I could run, I could use myself as a, as a scapegoat, run some calculations on it, give you two cents back. I'd be happy to do that, but the last, the last couple of drawings I was dealing with the OPM were like, "What about this? What about this? What about this?" And I was answering them and, you know, we were getting someplace and then the vote came. But they were, they were just adding, you know, a few parking spaces. But like I said, you're still considerably shy of the required amount. So now this is a whole different thing. So I'm not sure which ones we're gonna look at.
Yeah, and again, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how do we, I mean, because I think there're probably some select board members that may not even want you to look at those drawings based on a vote that was taken and said reduce it. Again, it may not have been with all the information on the table.
Like I started the meeting with, there was a number that I saw at the select board meeting of 800 square feet. You were far, far in excess of 800 square feet. So if you're trying to squeeze, you know, four or five parking spaces, that's not gonna cut it. You need roughly, from what I remember, the last time was 4,000 square feet. That's considerably more than four or five spaces.
Yeah, and I would defer to the OPMs between them.
And they would take the area from green space. If they get to a certain point where it's a point of no return, you finally get enough parking and I have enough green space. So...
So I'm just asking, is there gonna, would you be amenable? Would there be an opportunity for everybody to just talk about the projects again in terms of timing, what changes of scope mean and all of that?
Molly, is it your intent to work within the current bylaw in terms of parking requirements?
Absolutely. Yeah, nobody's asked, did not mention the Dover amendment?
Well, I just wanted to point out something, you know. I've been reading the Daily Hampshire Gazette since I was a kid. As a matter of fact, we had to go up to Han Store to buy it because they didn't deliver it. And, you know, that's when I was reading the comics, Modern, Modern Maynard's was in there. Later on, Milk Cole, the sports writer. More recently, I've been reading the Obituaries, just for a diversion. You know, D transfers, real estate transactions. And I never really paid much attention to the editorial page. But I'll tell you, that article, that editorial, unsigned by the way, last Friday, convinced me that I'm gonna start reading it because that page is really entertaining. It's very entertaining. And just talking about the Dover amendment because that was mentioned in that editorial. And they mentioned two legal opinions that we had received. Well, it doesn't matter how many legal opinions we receive. It matters what the opinions say, what they say. Town Council's opinion was well-written and he gave us an honest opinion. In short, he wasn't really sure if the Dover amendment applied here. The words that he used were, "You may be able to use the Dover amendment." The second opinion we got was, I think the lawyer probably was told the conclusion he had to come to and then tried to argue his way around it.
Conjecture.
Conjecture. I gave, I give Town Council's opinion a B. The second opinion gets a D minus. The only reason it doesn't get an F is I could find no spelling errors. They also talked about sleight of hand. Remember that phrase, sleight of hand? Well, I'm gonna pull something out of my hat right now. A third Dover amendment, excuse me, a third legal opinion that the Gazette never mentioned. Why didn't the Gazette know about this? It was, it was sent to us July 28th, 2018 from Greens, Miles, Lipton, LP. It was an opinion given by Michael Pill. And in boldface, can the camera see this? Can you zero in on that? Can you zero in on that? It says, "Library parking does not qualify for," and I'll, I'll skip the legal, legal documentation, "educational zoning exemption" because "Goodwin Memorial Library is not primarily an educational use under Massachusetts case law, nor is it a library located on educational institution's campus." Why didn't the Daily Hampshire Gazette get a copy of this?
Okay, that's enough points. I think you made your point.
And I've got copies, excuse me, one other thing, I've got copies of that opinion here if anybody would care to take them and read them because apparently nobody has.
So would there be any appetite for a meeting where we can have a sharing of information?
I have no problem.
In advance of the hearing that...
I have, I have, you want to do that your next select board meeting?
Well, that's...
Tomorrow.
No.
Well, that's tomorrow.
Next week?
Two weeks.
Nothing?
Or we could schedule a special meeting.
We could do a special meeting next week?
If we keep meeting every week, I'm gonna have to get a raise, Jim.
Well, it's, it's good to hear.
What was that one? The next week? Next, next, like, I mean, we could do a meeting next week?
It's good to hear that we're trying to work to a reasonable conclusion and resolve the, the problem. Sue, you're asking our opinion and that's a reasonable question to the members of the, of the board here. And it appears from my opinion that there is some give and take and there is a solution, it looks like, on the horizon. However, one thing troubled me is the fact that to exempt the, David Nixon is gonna present something at the town meeting to exempt municipal buildings from parking regulations. This, who was it presented by, David?
Well, that, that was a placeholder that was put on a, as a result of a previous meeting.
Who put it on?
On the select board requested, right?
Was it a, was it a three to two vote?
No, no, there was no, there was no vote. It was a placeholder on the town meeting.
By whom? By whom?
It was going to be conversation between the select board and the planning board. That was based on a couple of, I don't know how many hearings ago.
Because I do, I do spell a...
And we have not voted on that, Joe, is my point.
But the point of...
Wait, 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 Joe, Joe.
No, I, I wanna make this point. It's perfectly clear. Every, we're being upfront. You're not being upfront. That is the backdoor way of exempting this particular project from the parking or the zoning issues. And somebody is sneaking it back in without full disclosure. Once again, we were, somebody is deceiving us here. And that is critical to be noted.
Yes. So I want to just speak to that. Again, just because of the timeline that we all have to follow, just like you have hearing requirements, there was consideration given to trying to see if we could get a vote on town meeting floor to change the bylaw specific to parking for municipal buildings. That was a thought. When the thought was floated by multiple people, what the select board did was told David, "Go ahead and put a placeholder on there," which is very, we do that all the time. As we get closer to fall town meeting, then we need to take a position on that. It's my understanding right now that, I'm not aware of anybody actively working on language for that article.
Well, there has to be somebody pushing it.
I have it in front of me.
Well, that was what David put in for a placeholder.
Does the chairman, wait, wait, there's no such, there's no such thing as a placeholder for a zone article. So let me understand this. Is this a request for a bylaw or not? An amendment?
It was, my only knowledge was a request for a discussion. And I know that I had some discussion directly with Bill Dwyer, right? You and I talked a little bit, but there was no work done.
Specific words are, I, specific requirement, this, this is exactly the warning for the required of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5. I am transmitting a proposed article to amend the Town of Hamley Zone bylaw concerning parking for municipal projects that goes to the article itself. So this is an actual request for a zone amendment?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, the select board directed me to submit this to the planning board under, as you cited, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. I have 14 days from that select board meeting to submit the article or else the article would be invalid. So this is a transmittal as required by law.
At what meeting?
But the select boards say they didn't vote on it.
Yeah, what meeting did it happen?
I believe it was the two meetings ago, so that would have been the ninth.
The select one take a vote on it?
No, that's what we're trying to say. Not on the language.
Who instructed you to do it?
Select board have...
Well, they said they didn't take a vote. So who, who instructed you to do it?
This is a, this is a process which is defined by Mass. General Law.
No, 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 it's not a process.
I have 14 days to submit it.
The vote, Mr. Nixon. And not one selectman can take the action of a board. It's a majority that carries and gives you the order. What majority gave you that order?
This is a process that is defined by Massachusetts General Law. It is not something that the select board can...
Not one or two selectmen can take on and do these things that you not...
It's a transmittal to the planning board as required.
Mr. Nixon, not one or two selectmen can do this. It takes a majority at a public meeting to do this. Now what kind of deals are you doing, underhanded deals that you guys are...
Mr. Chair. So what we were hoping to avoid was having emotions run a little bit too hot and too high. So we're asking respectfully if we could make sure everybody's in the same room at the same time so that we can dispel any rumors or concerns, including the ones that you are voicing right now.
We're working toward a conclusion. You're right.
Yes. And so we're just trying to get everybody there. Don't think there's any...
And this is, certainly, this is, it certainly bothers me because everybody was gonna be forthright and the transparency issue came up. And it appears that this is something that is not transparent. And it appears like, well, if all fails, this is our quote Dover limit.
No. And again, what I said at the beginning, I'll tell you. The OPMs got together, they worked on a plan to see if they could make the parking work in accordance with existing bylaws, no, no change in bylaws, no introduction of a Dover amendment. That may or may not work. Thank you, Jim, for being willing to take a look at that. Again, if you saw the last select board meeting, you understand that there's a division on the select board right now as to whether or not we should even bother to proceed with that original full-size, I don't know what to describe, full-size meeting or to immediately go to a reduced one. And we just want to make sure that all of the information's on the table so that we can make an informed decision because that includes impact on... can make an informed decision, because that includes impact on scheduling, cost, et cetera. That's all we're asking, and it would be helpful to have everybody know something about it in the room, so we can do that.
Yes, and the 14 days is after a vote, is, I believe, and I'm really recalling from memory, when selectmen used to present a lot to the planning board, not the other way around.
At the meeting next week, would somebody be willing to make a motion to withdraw this placeholder on the planning board?
I want to know who put it on here.
She said the select one did it. We had it on as a joint thing with the planning board, but it had to be...
Okay, may I propose this? How about if we have a joint meeting next Tuesday, the 25th? Planning board, selectmen, whoever else you want to have attend. Okay, 7 o'clock or 6, 7 o'clock, right here?
Can we just check?
Or is it, what do you do in the town hall? Do it here.
Just want to make sure both of the, is Mark Sullivan here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go. Can you do the 25th as well? And Phil?
Yeah.
And Suzanne, and where's Allison?
Yeah.
The 25th is kind of a...
David, Sudra, and your group? Okay. Sorry, I'm just looking around to make sure that all the parties are represented adequately to, so the 25th.
The 25th is important, let me explain why. Because that would give you time to cancel your zone amendment. If you don't meet on the 25th, I need to get the publication to the Gazette for publication on October 2nd and 9th for the public hearing on the 16th. And if I don't get it in by Wednesday or Thursday, then it'll be too late for any zone amendments, so it's kind of a drop dead date in that sense. So the 25th works for everybody, and that's great.
And you'll be posted for a meeting that day, so you can...
What's the, what's the meaning on the 16th?
The 16th will be the public zoning, we have to have a zoning public hearing on any zone amendments.
In advance of...
And we have to do that for Mass. General Law, for that, that's the whole system to, for adopting a zone amendment.
So that will include the adult-use marijuana, the moratorium extension, and the roof change, change in roofing materials.
It's also going to be two general bylaws pertinent to marijuana. One for the, for whatever reason, this is according to the attorney general, we need both a zone bylaw and a general amendment to limit 20 percent. I don't know why, but I'm not going to argue with them, that's what they said. And there's also going to be a general bylaw amendment to the open container bylaw to prohibit the open use of marijuana use for adults, okay? That's all, I'm working with Mike Mason and David Nixon on that one.
Okay, all right, so 25th.
25th, 7:15, 7 o'clock, right here.
So let's, let's work through exactly what the agenda is going to be. We're not going to be making any decision. It will not be a continuation of the public hearing on the senior center library proposal. It will be a policy coordination meeting between the boards.
Yeah, and I would also throw in there, I would just call it a joint project update. I think probably the place to start is to just get everybody back on the same page as to where we think we are. Then everybody agree on that, and then go forward with possible permutations of where we go from there.
Draw and review, but I, we gave a directive three weeks ago to reduce the size of the building, and I want to know from the OPM tonight if that's been in progress.
So two weeks ago, Phil Palumbo, project manager with Colliers, OPM for the senior center project, two weeks ago at the select board meeting, a vote was taken to reduce the senior center building to 10,035 square feet. The next day, we started coordinating with the architect on getting a proposal from them for the add services to produce that redesign of the building and the site. We then kind of tabled that effort till the director of the senior center got back from her vacation, so we picked up that effort the following week. And it was then that next Wednesday, last Wednesday, where the other select board meeting occurred, where there was a talk of maybe there's going to be an effort to rescind that vote. So it was at that point where we started...
Where did you get that it was going to be rescinded? I shouldn't be talking about it here, sir.
No, it's a joint now.
Joyce, Joyce is making a very...
It's not a joint meeting.
Joyce is making a very, very good point here, because...
Mr. Segredic.
Well, no, I just want, she is right on...
No, no, Mr. Segredic, it is not a planning board topic, this one.
Well, I'm afraid I have to speak out on this one. The fact that they are looking, whoever they are, looking to extend, extend so that the zoning bylaw reducing the amount of parking can be put on this town meeting. So perhaps, I've been through this before, and a good lawyer represents somebody here giving him this get out of jail free card, so...
Mr. Palumbo, I got a question. You brought the original plan to the, to the planning committee. Did you know that it was in violation of the zoning bylaw in terms of parking?
We did not, no.
Well, why didn't you? Didn't you read the bylaw?
Yeah, we read the bylaw, and the civil engineer, that is their large responsibility to understand parking area, got the wrong information.
You got wrong information? Lot of wrong information going around.
Right, so what we learned at one of the planning board hearings is, you know, in the bylaw, it doesn't indicate exactly how the calc should be done to understand...
As OPM, isn't your responsibility to make sure everything is copacetic?
Mr. Chair.
This, this was...
Gentlemen, let the gentlemen speak. Keep interrupting. If we wait to get back to the original question, this is supposed to be posted to him.
So at the last, select board meeting last week, correct, there wasn't a vote to rescind the prior vote, but in watching that meeting, it made me, or it made our project team feel like, okay, maybe we should continue on with the effort of trying to produce a site plan, combined site plan with the current building size minus a few hundred square feet, that we could, you know, be compliant with the two to one. So that effort picked back up after watching the most recent select board meeting. So like Molly had mentioned, over the past couple of days, we've had conference calls, and that effort's been ongoing. But we haven't, the effort to understand the proposal from the design team, if we did have to reduce the size of the building, that has continued. We've gotten a proposal, we've put numbers together to understand schedule and cost implications, so we're kind of working it on both angles so we can react quickly when that needs to happen.
Yeah, I got a comment. You, the lawyer, engineers, met with these two gentlemen off record. Then you called me the next day or the day afterward to meet with me to circumvent the open meat law. There's too many backdoor meetings here. And to me, if I was sitting there as a selectman and you were ordered to reduce it, and you didn't, I would have fired you on the spot. The board, as a majority board, gave you specific orders that you didn't carry out.
I followed them the next day.
Yeah, right, you did.
Okay. That is, no. Anything else?
See you next Tuesday.
See you next Tuesday.
To be continued?
Stay tuned for the next episode.
All right, so again, to clarify, next Tuesday is going to be a continuation of this discussion. It is not a continuation of the public hearing, and no votes will be taken on the subject matter of the pending application. So question is whether to schedule it for down here or upstairs?
They want to hold it down here, I think. Just in case it's cooler, if there's no other reason.
It'll be cold by then.
Probably will. It'd be snowing, who knows?
Icebox, for sure. It's down here, it's fine.
At least they got heat down here, too.
Tom, given the developments here and the reduction that's been voted on, 3-2 by the planning board, excuse me, the select board, would you withdraw your claim that this is a Dover Amendment project?
For the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson over in Amherst. Mr. Sosinski, I still believe it is a Dover Amendment project because I believe a library does qualify under the Dover Amendment. It may turn out that it's not needed because they will be compliant with the two to one parking ratio that the zoning bylaw requires.
It would, excuse me, that.
Well, so, I'm just saying, I still believe it does qualify for Dover Amendment protection.
That's your right, but it would certainly smooth the process out and take one more angle out of the whole thing that's going on.
I don't think it's necessary. Complying with zoning, Dover Amendment is irrelevant, looks like.
I was wasting a lot of my time, I'll tell you.
Yep. One message for you, Mr. Dwyer. It's over, Dover.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Councilman.
All right, thank you.
That's it?
That's it, now we open our public hearings.
Did you take, was there a motion or second?
Oh, no, there wasn't. I'll make a motion to continue. Motion to continue to November 20th at 7:15.
November 20th?
Okay, two weeks away.
Correct.
Okay. You have a motion? You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Which would you like to first? Exotic Auto or the subdivision?
Correct, you're right, first.
Correct.
Yeah.
The Hadley Planning Board will conduct, will conduct public hearings on Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room.
Excuse us, there's still a meeting going on.
The purpose of the first hearing is to review the application of Phil Shumway to create a very small, two-lot definitive subdivision at 22 Breckenridge Road. The second hearing is to review the application of easy ride, no, that was, that was the wrong printing, of Exotic Auto. Currently located at the corner of Russell and East Street for special permit site plan approval to relocate to an existing 2,422 square foot building at 373 River Drive, zone limited business. Application and plan to be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours. Publish twice in the Gazette, September 4 and 11.
Good evening.
Good evening.
22 Breckenridge Road, very small subdivision. You have seen the preliminary plans and the, I've got small versions and I've got more legible, larger versions. Let me bring these out.
We can do with a small one here.
This is Mr. Shumway, the owner of the property. So what we're asking for is a waiver of basically all the subdivision regulations in order to create a private drive shown as Jackson Lane on the plan. So what, and I'll talk about the general situation, and then I'll go back and explain what you're looking at there, the various colors. So there is enough land on this property, if we were to put in a full-blown subdivision road, we could create four building lots. So in exchange for doing away with two building lots, putting the land in some kind of conservation restriction, I also have a note on the plan that says it is not buildable and non-subdividable. And that is the big area that is called Parcel A, 2.3974 acres with the orange hash marks in it. So the existing house is shown as Lot 2. We're creating this private road to create frontage for the existing house and the second lot, known as Lot 1. 200 feet of frontage on the private way, 40,000 square feet, 150-foot square feet inside each lot, et cetera, et cetera. The existing driveway is shown as clear, or white, if you will, here. And the last time we went through this, the fire chief said he wanted a minimum of a 15-foot roadway driveway, whatever you want to call it. So I have labeled the road as to be 15 feet wide. The orange that you see on the sides of the driveway is where we have to expand from the existing driveway. I have a turnaround shown so that if emergency vehicle came in and had to go into either driveway, it can back in here and go back out, doesn't have to back out all the way onto Breckenridge Road. We have private sewer, public water.
Real sewer, is it?
No.
What's private septic?
Yeah, I thought it's a private sewer.
It was a private sewer.
Well, it's similar.
Okay.
Private septic, whatever.
This is Mr. Tudor's own property, is that?
No, no, this is a different one. This is on the top of the hill.
Oh, top of the hill, okay.
Tudor's coming in later.
Okay. Oh, down, further down.
I don't, who'd you buy that from? I don't remember. It's being...
Schuster.
Schuster. So it's a house that's way back in the woods, you don't know it's there.
Oldie Schuster.
Wait, what, is Breckenridge on the right?
On the top, on the right, yes. There's, it's like a...
Oh, Joe, oh, so you're on, you're on the, you're on...
Behind Malinowski's house.
This is, this is, okay.
Malinowski's house is down here somewhere, on the...
Right, okay.
Kettle.
And so that would mean, like, Carl Tudor's house is up here somewhere.
No, Carl Tudor's house is over down here, and across, I should have shown...
Oh, so, oh, I'm sorry, this is the north hill, so this is actually upside down. This is, this is south, not north.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Across the street is, what is that?
Oh, so you're on the east side of Breckenridge?
Quinlan Drive is basically across.
Oh, yeah, so you're on the east side of Breckenridge?
Yes.
Okay, 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 I didn't see the north arrow.
So it's basically cut and dry. The only, the only detail I show as far as any construction goes is to make sure that the driveway is built adequately to handle a fire truck.
So you're only creating one new house lot?
Correct.
Okay.
What is this? This a gravel road, it's blacked out?
It's gravel.
What is it gonna be?
State gravel.
Yeah.
Is the fire chief okay?
I, he should have...
He didn't comment back.
He, he got a copy of it?
Yeah, he was supposed to, yeah.
They got a copy, but, but he could have copied this, one of these two, one of the two I gave the small, the big one.
Generally, you put a cross-section of the driveway here, is it a new?
Who's gonna own the, who's gonna own that?
I would imagine it would be, well, let's see.
It's gonna be...
Which house are you living, gonna live in?
Anyone.
Okay, and then somebody in your family is going to...
Something. Yeah, this would be owned by the new lot, myself.
So it would be Lot 1?
Yes.
Okay.
What is this, what's this lot here, open?
Wood.
It's all wood. Yeah, you can't even see it from any angle, from any other property.
It's pretty dense, isn't it?
Yeah, you can't, you can't see the existing house from the road, at least I can't.
Yeah, that's right.
It's way back there.
Okay.
This is still contingent upon the fire chief, still.
He should have responded.
He didn't.
If he didn't respond, the assumption is that he doesn't care.
Wait a minute, that's, that attitude, he don't care. That's what she does.
That he doesn't have a concern with what he sees.
Okay.
I know there are some of others here, so...
Yeah. Any other questions for the board? Any questions for any of butters out there? Yes, ma'am.
No, I have no questions, I'm just...
No, you have a lady speaking.
Can you just clarify for us the driveway and how it impacts...
Could you come to the wife and speak?
Lori Yanis, 20 Breckenridge Road. I'm just asking if Randy can clarify for us exactly where the driveway is. Anybody got my reading glasses? Wait, I need reading glasses. You're just passing back and forth.
The driveway is not changing.
Okay.
Which location is, well, it's, it's changing, I mean, it's staying basically where it is. It's going to be a little bit wider at the road, and it's going to open up here, this dark that you see.
And the house, hello, the house here is the existing house?
Yes.
And that's going to stay exactly where it is, and then the new house is where the clearing is already right now?
It's up in here, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, please back, they're nice.
Hey, can I usually watch you?
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kathy Hannan on 2 Quinlan Drive. I was wondering if your site plan has anything to include an anti-tracking pad for the dirt and the construction of clearing and all the mud? The reason I'm asking is we worked really hard, there's a storm drain, a catch basin at the end of 2 Quinlan. Yeah, it's called Lake Quinlan. And that just was repaired after years and years, from what I understand from the neighbors, of trying really hard to get that fixed. And are concerned, yeah, they put in new pipes, there's now drainage across Quinlan, which is much safer for traffic and in the winter. And if there's no anti-tracking pad, I was just concerned about the mud from the trucks clearing everything, getting onto the street and then draining right down into that catch basin. So I didn't know if the site plan had...
It doesn't at this point, but we do have 20, whatever the plan was decision, there's a 20-day appeal period, so I can certainly add something like that to the plans.
What's an anti-tracking?
Trap rock. Trap rock, so that they, the dirt will come off the vehicles.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, got you.
The driveway's in very poor condition right now. We're gonna put in a new driveway, so we should not have...
I understand that, it's just that we didn't want that, all the work the DPW did and all their hard efforts to get it parked again.
You understand what she's talking about.
You can see it, that little catch basin.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where that is.
As far as what they want you to do, you understand, they want you to put a bunch of probably 50 feet or so of trap rock, relatively, you know, three or four inches.
Bigger stuff.
Diameter stuff, so that when the vehicles come out doing the work, the dirt will come off in the trap rock and not out on the road.
So, they could make the condition that that must be installed prior to any, so this is, this is woods right now?
Some of the trees have been cut, but that's, it's wooded area.
Now, you could be conditioned here, when this layout is, that's the first thing that...
I said, that'd be a condition before any other site work be done, that this anti-tracking, that's what you're calling it?
I've never heard it referred to that.
I, I don't want to use a term that is not construction familiar.
Okay, I don't know what the technical term is for it, so I can't help you.
Okay. I want to make sure that we use a term that's understood by all, that we tell...
We're all here, so I think we all will understand what it means.
I want to make sure you use a term that if you call, say Carl's or River Drive or anybody else, say they want some anti-tracking put in, like, what are you talking about?
I'll make, I'll make some kind of a detail on the plan before it gets submitted for signature.
So, 50 feet of trap rock on driveway at juncture with Breckenridge?
How long is this driveway here?
Right there's 170.
170 feet? I would say, I would say, I'd say go maybe 75 feet, 80, 80 feet, 80 feet. Because I gotta say that 50 feet may be a little bit short. Because the big truck, that's only a couple of revolutions.
Yeah, 10-wheel, one right.
You know, it's one revolution, one revolution of 10-wheeler is like...
Which in the three-quarters, it's three inches taller.
Three-nine, you're talking 12, 12 feet. That's like, that's like three turns, you want more than that.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
It's 80 feet. And that would just be for construction or with that?
They would use that for their base.
That would be, that would be the basis for the base, the base for the final driver, whatever he wants, he could even leave it in. Why would he take it out?
Yeah, it makes no sense.
That'd cost too much money to take out, or then it'd be a waste.
It'd be, it'd be a good base, it'd be beat down nicely.
Yeah. He may want to go for it, but that's him. Okay. Anything else?
We just, two concerns, one would be...
I can do it right there.
One would be just an awareness of the neighborhood in terms of noise with any construction we can, you know, what type of construction it is, so that it's done during normal hours.
Well, we want a good neighbor, like, I'm looking to live there myself, so it's not my neighborhood, so I want a good neighbor.
That's good, that's good. And what was it? And the other one is just a concern that you're probably aware of is that, like you mentioned, it's on the hill and there's a sharp turn going up to the hill and the other one, and the college kids go pretty quick. So, every time we turn into Quinlan, we take our lives in the nick. So, we want, there's now going to be another distraction. Two houses is probably not really as much to the neighborhood.
Is there any trees right here?
Yes. Blocking.
It's a road save, though, so.
So, I think to Jimmy's point, be clear...
So, you may want to take, take a, just cut back a little bit, not, but the uphill more for the downhill, cut back, at least you're gonna, you know, you're not gonna get a great line of sight, but at least they'll cut it back a few feet if we could hear.
I didn't have to take it down because it was a hazard. And the other one is tied right to a telephone pole.
Just to make you aware, again, they come up there real quick, those trees are blocking...
And you've got a worse turnout then than you would. It's really dangerous with people going over the speed limit up there.
Mostly because it's residential, we set construction hours from 7 till, say, 6 at night. That way, somebody's not in there 5 o'clock that morning with the neighbors.
I can guarantee you, I won't be in there 5 o'clock in the morning.
No.
But, there are...
You hire subs, don't you?
I'm building it myself.
And who's doing all the excavating?
Well, that's, that's me.
That's what I'm saying.
I can, I can, yeah, I can totally agree with that.
No, no problem, John, no problem. So, yes, if you want to, if you want to add that, that's fine.
Thank you.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM?
That sounds good.
Yeah, that's okay.
I was gonna say, sometimes you hit 5 o'clock and you need to finish something.
Yeah, 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock is probably a more, so 12-hour day.
You got a lot of neighbors, so it's a long...
It's gonna be dark by then. It's kinda when you do the work, though, yeah. Summer will be, whatever. Okay. Anything else? Yes, sir?
John Shaw, 7 Quinlan Drive. The town did a very nice job this summer of repaving our road, so it's brand-new all asphalt on there. And there have been times where the construction, some of the construction vehicles that have been going into the site, they unloaded on their trailers onto Quinlan Drive and then driving across the street. And they have started to leave some marks on the new asphalt. I guess we just don't want it destroyed.
I have not ordered any construction, there's not been any digging or anything of that nature up on that. And so, I have no problem with telling people not to park over there.
Let's put it this way, if you see them wreck the road, you call the DPW, because then they'll have to fix it.
We just put construction load and unload on 2... Not on Breckenridge or Quinlan?
Why would, Breckenridge?
Yeah, but I mean, if somebody comes in with those, with cleats, you know what I mean, they can do a lot of damage, rubber tires knocked out.
All construction vehicles to park on-site around Breckenridge?
Okay.
Breckenridge would be extremely dangerous, so would that occur?
Breckenridge is a narrow road. What are you gonna have, 10-wheel is parked on Breckenridge?
It's on the top.
That's not...
No, you can't do that.
It's gotta unload somewhere.
You can't park on Breckenridge.
When they bring their equipment in, they're gonna offload and they're gonna go right onto the site. They go in there clear, they can go right on the site, so there's no reason...
Yeah, so actually, since there's only one lot that is being built, there is one developed lot here already, so...
But they're gonna cut the road in first, though.
Yeah.
So, there's no reason for them to park out on Breckenridge, none.
Or are they gonna park while they cut the road in?
They could unload here.
Okay.
And if you park out, they could, you know, you're living right here right now?
No.
Or you're not, you, or you don't live there now?
No, I do not.
Oh, okay.
It's a whole development.
But it's not there. Correct. Well, there is some room, but I don't see any reason, I don't see any reason why they can't pull and park under the pad.
Okay.
That shouldn't be a problem.
All construction vehicles to park and load/unload on-site, not on Quinlan.
Perfect, okay.
Some trailers can't make it in there, they, they have to offload on the street. You know, somebody comes with a drop next, something like that, they're gonna offload on the street and then wheel it in and then they're gone.
Okay, let's just say not on Quinlan. You know, for, we're not talking about something being left there for days.
No, you just unload and get out.
Yeah, so...
I think you need to look at the road there, because it's a really bad curve and it is narrow. So, if they park right in front of where his road is going to be, or near there, people aren't gonna see it.
But they're gonna park and unload and be gone?
Then they need somebody on either side, because it's a narrow road. The house diagonally across from him has been hit with people speeding.
Which house?
Their house? No.
No, Sylvane's old house.
This thing is right in the middle of the road. It's right in the middle of the road, right?
Yeah, yeah, and they come up there really fast.
Why can't he come down on Breckenridge?
So, so there's only, only so much we can do through the subdivision regulations.
I understand, I just think you need to look at it, I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt.
Then, I think maybe the thing to do is if you see that there is a problem, call the police.
Well, you know, what I see a lot, and there was one in North Hampton, Arizona, same thing was on the corner, they put signs up before it and after it during that construction period, so it warned the people that there is construction there.
Okay, you can tell the contractor.
It was right on the corner, same thing, like this, right on the corner.
I know.
They're not gonna come in there with a helicopter.
I understand, I'm just afraid of accidents.
Anything else? Saying nothing?
What we can do here? What is your June 18?
It's got a revised date on it.
9/18.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a definitive subdivision approval upon following findings and conditions. Satisfies, the project satisfies the general purposes of the subdivision control law and complies with Hadley subdivision regulations except as waived herein. All work must be conducted according to the plans as revised September 18. Because of the small scale of this subdivision, the planning board determines that it is the public interest to not be consistent with the intent of the purpose of the subdivision control law to waive strict compliance. The, no more than one dwelling may be constructed on each lot. No lot hereby approved may be further subdivided for the purpose to construct the additional dwellings. Layouts of ways and municipal services have been designed for two lots only and approval is limited to that number of lots. Understood, it is understood and agreed that the roadway has been designed and will be constructed in a manner which will render it unacceptable that the town of Hadley is the townway and the roadway will not be presented to town meeting for acceptance. The town of Hadley will have no obligation for maintenance of the way. All infrastructure, ratings, snow and ice removal, care, drainage and/or utility shall be the responsibility of the owners. The applicant shall cause a sign to be posted at the intersection of the subdivision way and the adjacent public way identifying the subdivision as a private way. 80% of trap rock, 80 feet of track rock gravel will be laid at the junction with the driveway and Breckenridge Road. Clear growth at the end of the driveway to improve sightlines. Construction limited 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. All construction vehicles to park and load/unload on-site, not on Breckenridge. Not on Quinlan.
That trap rock, you should put a size on it.
I'm gonna say... What size?
How about inch and a half? I think you get them once you have them in the three-quarters, it's a much different product.
Who is?
Yeah. Inch and a half, okay with you guys?
Yeah, okay. Inch and a half.
Inch and a half, now.
Perspective purchases are cautioned that the subdivision may be adjacent to active farmland. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, the Water Commissioners and state agencies. Any changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board and this approval should not become effective until the notice decision is referenced to the original subdivision plan and recorded at the registry of deeds. That's it.
So, Bill, I just want to clear, clarify one thing. That last statement you made, I have, there's a place on the plan that says, decision recorded in blah, 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 I don't have it filled out yet, obviously, so what will happen is we'll get the decision, we'll record it, then I'll put it on the plan where it's recorded, then I'll bring the plan in for you guys to sign.
Okay, or you can do them simultaneously. The, I worded it that way because the registry was complaining about people copying the decision onto the plan itself, so I did allow for separate recording.
There's the motion. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next one.
Next one. 271 and 373 River Drive. Same thing, I've got small versions and I've got larger ones.
Just 371, 373?
Yeah, 371 is the house, 373 is the garage.
I'm actually going to, I, I may have something to say, so I'm going to, you have the decision? I'll take it with me. So, the setup is a combination of site plan approval with special permit, this is in the limited business, so you need a limited business special permit. So... So, I am not participating as a planning board member, but I am a buyer. So, yeah, I'm gonna take it with me.
Oh, okay. Okay. You ready?
Okay. Property is, the, the, the concern is 373, the garage. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming use of auto repair and sale. The current owner has passed away, his wife wants to sell property. The gentleman who owns Exotic Auto on the corner of Route 9 and East Street would like to purchase the property and use it as a second place of business. I know on your, so the hearing notice, you said you wanted to, you wanted to move from East Street over to here, but that is not...
You're gonna keep them both?
He's gonna keep both. He has a son who's interested in the business, he's trying to accommodate that. So, last, previous owner bought this from the Lesco, or the bank, I guess, he's got foreclosed on it, anyhow. He came before the board, we got a permit for 10 cars for sale. Again, it's pre-existing, we all know what it used to look like in its heyday. There were cars on every inch of blacktop and there were cars parked out in River Drive. So, in light of that, I am trying to make this a place that he can conduct his business with a reasonable amount of cars and leave space where people coming down Cummins Road or on River Drive can see around the corner, get out on, on River Drive and not worry about causing an accident or being in an accident. Last, the current owner has a used car license for 10 cars.
For beer?
Yeah.
How did he ever get 10 cars for beer?
Why didn't he give it to him?
Well, if, this, this plan is basically what I brought before you guys. Again, this is a grandfathered use, so I could have come in and said, we're gonna put 50 cars on there because it's grandfathered, so we tried to...
You wouldn't have had the bias.
Well, I know, well, I wouldn't have necessarily had to, but anyhow, we got the 10 cars.
No, you grandfathered for the use, but you're not grandfathered, so you're exempt from, you can do what you want.
Exactly.
You go play today, cars on this site.
Okay, well anyhow, let's, let's back up a second and we can deal with that. The 10 cars was what I brought before the board last time and the selectman gave them a license. I think, Bill, did I see you have a copy of the license?
I do.
Does it say 10 cars?
It says 10 cars.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not interested in arguing about that right now, I'm just stating the facts, Joe, hang on.
What the heck is wrong with 10 cars? That ain't many cars.
Well, no, no, no. Stop, stop, stop. Let him continue, okay?
So, what I'm showing you here is what's existing for the, the used car license and then I'm, again, I'm trying to put spaces for various uses of vehicles. The house is part of this property, I've got two parking spaces for that. I've got four parking spaces for customers in front of the building, there's a door here that I didn't want to block. Space to put five cars that are waiting on repairs potentially and two cars for employees over here. So, that's what I think is... So, that's what I think is a reasonable use that's not going to block the road. So, obviously, I'm hearing some disagreeing opinions on that and.
Okay, I have up to the five car, but I think you don't need, squeezing the ten cars in for sale is mighty tight. Plus, what are you going to do, how are you going to direct the traffic along Cummins Road? When this, when this rod was formerly run, this, I don't want to put it in.
Again, it's fine, you can put whatever you want on there.
When this was formerly run as a, was formerly, was less.
That, yeah.
That was Cummins Road.
Meaning they were using his property?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ninety, ninety percent of the time, cars would cut across here, virtually nobody made this start. I mean, I can't, it was so much because this was normally open, this was normally cut across, this was, this was Cummins Road.
There's no distinction right now between Cummins Road and the traffic lot, none.
How, how are you going to make that distinction is my question.
Okay. Let's, let's talk about this one first.
Yeah, one at a time, one at a time, let's, let's say one thing at a time.
Let's get long together.
Okay, so, I mean, let's think about a way that it could be done. I'm sure Paul would have no problem trying to do something that makes sense, but what will make sense?
Kerb cuts, you have to designate where the kerb goes.
There is, this is why they don't, that is all.
No, you have to, that's your step, you've got to put a curb in there.
No, this, this is going to.
Okay, no, I get it, I'm, I'm not going to argue the point, Joe, I'm fine with coming up with a solution, but it's just got to be something that's going to make sense.
I don't think, you know, I think like a post or something because you've got snow plow and, and those kerbs are nothing but trouble. So if you put a post.
You want a fence?
Not a fence.
Well, what's the green space? Some posts.
Yeah, I couldn't even go between it with a snow plow.
Yeah, maybe some posts, especially, posts especially around the corner, maybe a couple up here to guide, but that might be a good point.
So allowing to get in with a snow plow, you know, then it's.
Something.
Problem with that?
What's, what's the primary business going to be here?
Just auto repair.
Auto repair?
Maybe.
Your class two license, if you got a class two license, in the regulation, it has to be your primary business.
Yeah.
Well then, what do you say if repair is the primary business?
But we'll sell cars and we'll repair to it same time.
With that, with that hustle sold guys, their repairs was the primary business and sold out and it could.
But the laws say the laws.
Well, the law has more than the board's side than us to worry about.
Yeah, I'm trying to think what, what exactly, because I have, I have a class two license and it's not, I guess it's a primary business of my dealership, my primary business. It's an interesting situation, but anyhow, well, posts are no problem. Something that's going to make sense and look good.
How many feet apart are they apart?
You probably need three under radius, right?
One at each corner, one in the middle?
But enough for a plow to go through it and one back here somewhere. You know, so then this is designated as a lot, not as a road here, it's the road around it. In a front, you don't need nothing.
You need a couple, you need more than one here because you come in here and you can swerve in.
There's going to be green space there.
There is, well, there's green space all over here, Joe, this is all green space.
Well.
Well, that might be an idea. If you put some posts here and then you put maybe like a little island there, so people would see it, and posts are just a solid, oh, sea of blacktop, or maybe a, maybe an island that's a couple of feet wide.
Apple strawberry, apple strawberry or something.
Yes, ma'am.
And it looks better.
Hi there, my name is Julie Hogan, I'm at three seventy River Drive across the way. I was actually at the town clerk's office this afternoon, approximately eleven fifteen, to get a copy of the site plans and it's my understanding from the clerk that the plans weren't filed, so I, I don't have what you are all looking at now.
You didn't, you didn't give a copy of the, you didn't give a copy of the plan when you filed, when you filed your application? You're supposed to do that, yes.
It's my understanding that I'm not the fir, I'm not the first.
Give her that, give her that one, give her that, Joe, Randy.
That's okay.
Give her that one, give her a full cycle.
My concern, Jim, about the green space here is the fact that guaranteed cars are going to be parked right up to the road. If we want some way to demarcate the fifty-foot setback here, and that my suggestion is going to be to put a lawn there with green space.
Why, if you designate this for cars, then that's where it has to be. And if he doesn't, he violates the site plan review.
But getting, getting it in fourth is another story.
Exactly, correct. No, and I mean, I, there's some good, good suggestions.
Does the owner have any problems with that? Ripping up some, you have any problem ripping up some asphalt and putting some green space in there?
I can make a sidewalk there if you want. No, 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 that's not good. What, so all, all access for these cars is going to be from the front?
Yeah.
Okay, so what if, what if this is green space?
They got a, they got a access to the garage in the back.
Was that here? No, 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 no.
Jim, right here.
Right, 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 right here, I'm saying, this is green space. You give them the access to the front, the access to the back garage, this is green space and nothing in the front. Whatever you guys. That would certainly take care of the cars cutting.
Which would help the owner because I know people always cut across.
Yeah.
Jack and I did try to place something out there.
Yeah, I mean, there was a time when Jack used to put cars out here, at least to get hit.
Well, not my husband, not my husband.
No, 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 no.
We put, we put five gallon.
Prior Jack, no, no. I'm talking about when I was a kid. There was, there was cars always cutting, I remember one day he got upset, he put, he parked cars here and a couple that could clobber.
I just know how much work we did and I.
You know, I could see it.
The fence here to demarcate.
Radius, radius like this.
Here, we're talking about a fence here to demarcate the housing from the business.
Now you're starting to make it really hard to plow snow, Joe.
The reason I'm saying this is because as you look at the Bimbin site now where he is, there has been no compliance with what was presented to the planning board originally. So, you know there's going to be more cars there than was originally allowed, so we have to make some way to at least try to make it more difficult to comply.
Did he come in for site plan review?
Wouldn't he, cars parked on East Street now? He moved here? But eventually, would, 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 this site, Joe, would, this site, Joe, would ease his constraints on East Street? Wouldn't, wouldn't this site ease his constraints on East Street?
Yeah, that's what the plan is, basically, all the heavy work.
Do you have any, are you selling any cars on East Street now? No.
You mean, they gave you a permit to put cars wall-to-wall every place where they brought them?
Whatever you guys give me.
Just, just the select gave him the permit after, after, they ran some numbers and it turned out that they could put wall-to-wall cars there.
That, this, this is disappointing because this is the third time it's happened that somebody jumps the gun from a preliminary plan presenting it to us, goes to the select board before we have our site plan review and say, oh, we've got already ten cars. That's not the way it's supposed to go. The select board agreed that they would only issue something after the site plan was approved. So somebody either misconstrued or the selectman did not understand.
Who's idea was this?
Well, hang on a second, because if I'm, if I'm understanding what you're thinking, he has no, he has no license for cars.
Well, how did you get the permit for ten cars?
That, we, this was a site plan that we brought to before the planning.
There was a lot of questions and we wanted a specific plan.
Years ago, Joe, years ago. Whenever, whenever she and her husband got this approved, there was a site plan that was brought before you because I took the previous site plan and changed it for this, so.
I think that's, that's rather presumptuous of you to.
Okay, no, no, I, let's, let's. What happened in the past, let's, let's just, let's just move on with this plan, okay? We're, we're, we're trying to make progress and address the concerns. So the gentleman is agreeing that this will be green space in some shape, where, what were you saying this is going to be, John?
I would, I would think a three-foot green belt from this point here, line it up with this, this back corner of the building here and go this way. That way he can maneuver around here, he can go in there without clamming out going out on, on the road here, decrease more hazard. Let this be here, this is the green, right here.
I, 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 I'm more inclined to keep that whole corner in space because he's going to be parking cars there and jamming a lot of space in there like the Joe's point, if it's green space, it'll also look nice and really discourage anybody complying with it.
Could you put any green space along River Drive too, just to make it a little more slightly?
Well, that, this green space will come down and lie this so that this, for lack of a term, this triangle will be green.
Wow.
Okay.
That's fine, whatever you guys want.
You wait, I have a question, ma'am?
I'm, I'm concerned about the number of cars, just given the two parking for the house, the four parking for customers, the five cars waiting on repairs, the two cars for employees, we're well beyond the ten spots that I heard mentioned here, and that's not including the cars, the sale, the sale vehicles.
You know, tangled for the, the, you got the license to sell ten cars. In, in the repair business, there is no limit on repairs of a, a person can have.
So we're talking about potentially over twenty cars on that lot?
So, let's, let's talk about grandfathering. We're grandfather for sales.
Yes.
And there is a license for sales, limited to ten motor vehicles on property at any one time. Any repairs must be done inside the building at all times, sales records to be maintained, all activities to cease at eleven. All motor vehicles must be displayed with visible for-sale signs on them, no junk motor vehicles will be allowed, kept neat at all times, no junk cars lying around. Now, I'll agree they're grandfathered for sales, although ten, the license was for ten, but the sales records were what, one a year to a year?
My husband was repairing those buildings, as you remember. We'd worked our heart out on the house first and he was in the process of doing the garage over. And, and, yes.
We're talking about what was actually done.
Recently, recently after he died, I've shown you the records of.
You were selling, you were selling a few cars? Yeah.
But that did not mean that we would pursue it if he hadn't.
And for purposes of argument, we'll agree selling a few cars established as grandfather, remember, limited business, new automotive uses are not allowed. So, you know, we're, you've never been at ten, you've never had ten vehicles on.
He died.
But you never, you've never had ten vehicles on site.
Well, where are all those cars going?
What?
He had loyal two cars there all day.
Lesco did, but the current owner, the current owner didn't.
What was Jack's license, how many?
My husband.
Lesco?
I have no, I don't.
Okay, Jack didn't even have a license probably.
Yeah.
That's long before, that was a long time ago.
Right. So, I mean, I, there's a license there for ten, ten cars, whether they sold one or they sold two hundred, they still have a license for ten cars currently.
You can't exceed that number.
Right.
Or anybody that counts them, they could call, could file a complaint with the select board, they could haul them in for a hearing and revoke their license. That can happen to any class two lessons. So your neighbors, you watch that and if there's twenty cars there for sale, you go, you can go to the selectman, file a complaint, let them hold a hearing to revoke the license.
So, we're glad his business is doing so well. I see him out of my window from my office and, yeah, you, you can't fit an extra vehicle on that property, I don't think. It's like a game when you're trying to move cars around.
Well, we're not talking about that, this is.
Well, what we're talking about is a baseline here.
Bill, who are you representing?
I'm an arbiter. I have to drive by this place twice a day.
Why didn't you buy it then?
Okay, now.
You can buy it.
Personally, I think fifteen cars parked like that is not realistic. Because, you got, you got three D. That means to get anything out of the back or you're going to move everything, you, you play extreme musical cards. I would have no problem giving you ten cars total there for sale and repairs, but I think fifteen is way too much.
Sold.
If ten cars total, yes, then it just, my, my opinion is it makes it much more convenient. Enough said. Okay. All right, so ten cars total, repairs and sale.
On the north side of the building?
Uh, yes, well, the north, the northwest side, north, north, north.
All right, so ten cars.
Can we clarify what the number ten is, because does that include?
Sales and repair.
Okay, so you're still going to have two.
Employees and customers, yes.
You're including employees?
What about the customers?
These are ten, these fifteen will be reduced to ten. These, the, this employee parking and the two, the four customer parkings are still okay.
So if the guy's selling cars, wouldn't he want the cars up in the front row?
He can do them any way he wants.
But not, you can't park in the front yard.
He's got ten, he's got ten vehicles there he can park, however he wants to do them. New combination.
Where would you like him to park his cars for sale in the backyard?
Well, John, you can't park, if you give an audible deal dealership a choice.
You've got five cars for sale, this is not a major deal.
If, if he takes these vehicles out, then these ten cars will be to the backside of the building and corner.
Fifty feet is square.
Well, I'm not sure fifty feet's going to be reasonable on this.
Fifty feet can't cut it.
I don't, I don't, where's, where's the front yard setback on this, Randy, probably more than fifty feet back.
This side, this line, this line's hundred feet.
Okay, so you can't meet fifty feet.
There's no way.
You can't meet fifty feet.
It's an understanding he's making. Okay, we've got to go over lighting and.
See, I can't, I can't see this happening like this because you're putting this all in green, how is he going to go around here?
He's going to come out here and he's going to go over here. He's going to go on Cummins Road and River Drive.
And his garage door is here. He's going to go way out.
You still have garage door on the backside?
But he's not.
The old paint bays still there.
But you're not going to go through the garage, Jimmy, with the.
No, this, this, if this garage is the way it used to be, this is a separate, this is a.
That was a paint booth.
This is a paint booth and there's a wall here, right, inside?
Correct, the door is still there.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, this is strictly either a paint booth or repair garage and he's got, I think he's got two bays in here and three bays in here. Yeah, so if he's, he's going to bring cars in here if he wants to put something in, is it going to bring cars in here, is he going to come on Cummins, enter on Cummins Road or is he going to enter on River Drive, where it always used to be?
Is that going to work okay for you?
Hang on just one second, to Johnny's point about if we leave a travel lane in here just so you don't have to back out, I mean, there's enough room, probably you don't have to get out on River Drive. But if you leave the travel lane, then the cars can, you know, back out of here and do this rather than back out here.
Well, I mean, this is delineated with, with lines as, as a travel lane, so we're going to do, so there's no parking.
And also to, we have to say no parking here, guaranteed there's going to be cars parked on the street. We should say no parking within X amount of feet of the, of the road.
Well, the goal, Joe, is to put them where I've got them shown, so once we get out of that, then we got a problem, right?
Can, can you line it, can you put lines on it because you got it pretty well.
It's all blacktop, right?
Yeah, so we can line it.
Yeah.
Are you planning on doing painting there?
Not, not today's requirements.
Why can't you store some cars in the paint, in the painting yard before you bring them out for sale? Well, I'm just telling them how to get around this problem.
Why, no, why would you do that? You need the garage door, you need somebody to store it.
Where's the, where's the? Right here.
Why are you not?
Those, oh. Those, oh. I thought that this is.
I can make one from a handicap.
One we know of, yeah.
That's right. There's one that is always parked in.
Costs too much money.
On business, never.
Okay, right.
Well, you know, that actually is something, some uses are just too dense. Yes, maybe he does need to afford to use it, but if he's too dense, if he's packing it in too dense, this isn't the right spot.
This is not too dense, Bill. It's reduced down to ten with the repair cars and the for-sale stuff. I know you would want them to take everything out and leave it there, but that's not gonna happen.
How do we differentiate between the customer parking and the other parking? My concern is they're gonna end up using the four, I think, did you allot four customer parking spaces?
I have four spaces for customers, yes.
Where, I only see two.
It should be either.
Inside the door.
Other side of the front of the garage, right there.
Okay, so how long are customers able to stay? And what's the difference between the customers being serviced and, I don't know what other customers would be there?
To be honest, it's a fine line because both customers that come in wanna repair.
Exactly. So are those extra customer parking spots going to ultimately be used as sales?
He's got a big garage, he's gonna fill the garage.
There may be some, some of the customer cars may indeed become repairs. We're not gonna tell him where every single item must be parked. He has ten, he has sixteen parking spaces plus whatever inside the garage. And if he decides that he only needs one customer parking and he can put the rest into repairs, that's his business, that's a business decision on his part, okay? As long as his total vehicles usually doesn't exceed that amount.
But he's already got a license from the select.
Paul's trying to have a license. No, because we gotta get through this first and then we're going to the select.
Well, what he was saying is it sounded like he got the license and he didn't.
Right, there's no license.
That's what I thought.
Well, you know, right, cause he did.
He had the license, we had the license, I had the license.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know you don't have that information for this.
Okay, so we have, so we've decided, we've got green space with a delineated dry lane. These will be painted lines.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is what, he's gonna make a definitive plan.
I'm gonna have to make all these additions. Again, this is a, it's a special permit, so we, there's an appeal period, so I think.
Not only that, but these were not on file with the board summons today. So I would request that we continue rolling on this.
We are going to continue. We'll drop a copy off in town first.
Thank you.
We just gotta change it anyways.
You want an extra copy?
No, I can give them a copy.
Okay, so, a dumpster location.
Dumpster, to the dump, to the dump.
Okay, we have to come with that.
Lighting?
Lighting, we plan on doing anything with lights?
Well, outside lights, whatever, it's dark right now, there's nothing there, so. We'll have some lights around just to light up the place.
Well, for sure you don't want no lights, but shining over here and a car coming this way or a car coming that way.
Your residence is, the house is standing over here, so you wanna make sure that.
No, whatever the way is gonna be.
Randy, Randy, something, that's probably the only, I guess you're probably gonna have building lights probably shining down.
There'll be lights on the building shining down. If he's agreeable, I would say motion sensor lights so they're not on all the time.
Once they exit the road, they're gonna be on all the time. Well, depending on other stuff.
Well, anyhow.
Well, no, I think it's something important to be addressed because I live directly across the street, so I don't want the lights from the parking lot shining into my house twenty-four seven.
You gotta keep knowledge lighting on the property. But to the lady's point, you also don't want them.
Activated.
Spreading, yeah. See what you can work with.
Anything else, sir?
Signs. Signs, yeah.
Okay, the sign is going to, we'll have to get a picture of it, but it's going to be similar to what he has now.
You only have room for a building mount, a sign there.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna put one on the.
But the neighbors.
Although that might be a way to help delineate something. I'll talk with him, we'll figure it out, it might be building. Now, if it's building only.
Forty square feet, I think, in a limited business zone.
Forty, and is it one face of the building only?
No, you're allowed.
Two sides.
You're allowed multiple side.
I don't remember.
Let me, let me, before we.
Why don't he put a sign right in the, a sign right in the corner here? If you're putting this all green, he can put a nice sign.
Well, I think before we make a decision on signs, the neighbor should be aware that a sign indicating the name of the business, but do you want multiple signs? Like two nuts break this and that, or like fifty signs delineating every procedure that they do? And we generally do not allow that, but it happens.
A business establishment shall have a sign, a total sign allowance of forty square feet in a business, in a limited business and local business districts. One freestanding sign of forty square feet in a limited business district. Up to four wall signs are permitted for business establishment. Not to exceed forty square feet total. So he could have on two sides of the building and a forty square foot on the green space if you wanted.
Randy, can you come back with the measurements, like from the corner of the building to the street? With the front line is gonna be set back, so we would know what that is.
We could do better than that, give it to be closer to the front.
Well, the parking spaces are eighteen feet deep.
And how far is it from here?
Wait, wait, what is it, one inch to twenty, Randy?
Yes.
Forty, fifty, forty. The building is roughly thirty-five square feet from Route forty-seven.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five here to here.
I can give you those dimensions easy enough, it just clutters up everything and it makes it hard to see.
What are you asking for, John?
Well, I just wanted to see.
Thirty-five feet from here to here.
So any other concerns that I need to address?
Are we designating kinda like a no parking area right on Route forty-seven?
Let's see, we put twenty square feet.
One of the things that I thought this plan would do is, it's a picture of where the cars can go.
Okay.
So.
But we wanna make it clear.
I understand.
There is.
You're only going to be.
There's fifteen feet, if the vehicle's twenty feet and there's.
We only don't have about ten feet that the cars can't park, you could delineate about ten feet back, that's a.
That's what we have to do, yeah.
Okay.
What do you want, what do you want that, how do you want that done?
Uh, striped lines or something like the same, no parking.
Maybe like a hash line on Route forty-seven?
Okay, just.
You're gonna mark this guy's yard all up, it's gonna look stupid.
Well, you want him to park right on Route forty-seven?
Did I say that?
No, but I am making.
You're saying that, not me.
I am saying that because you are basically counteracting everything we're trying to compromise here and.
I don't wanna see the whole yard, well, lined this way, that way.
Okay, so let's, we were asking the neighbors about lights. So are the neighbors gonna wanna look at painted blacktop?
Well, how would you, well, you've come up with a suggestion, I will tell you nothing.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking the question.
Come up with a suggestion so the cars will not be parked right on Route forty-seven.
The left side of the cross. That is a nice touch, very nice touch.
Yet there's no roof.
Before you talk about a highway sign, a bylaw sign, better check the bylaw pretty carefully because I don't think you have enough room to set it back from.
I don't either, Bill, it's gotta be twenty feet, right?
Fifteen, yeah, twenty.
Twenty in every, I've never done a, something in this business zone. Twenty in a regular business, so if it's twenty feet, it's gonna be close to impossible. I'll, we'll look at that to make sure that it can't, it can or can't happen.
And I, not to bring it up again, but I still have questions about the total maximum number of cars allowed on the property at any given time. I believe the license that you were referring to previously doesn't reference ten cars for repair. It says ten cars on the property at any given time.
For sale. Because no automotive repair shop in the town of Hadley is limited to how many cars they can repair.
It doesn't say that.
I said it doesn't, they don't say it. No garage, no automotive repair in the whole town of Hadley has a fixed number of, number you can only have ten cars for repairs, nowhere.
Because of the way this is worded, and I'll submit it to the file, it says limit of ten motor vehicles on property at any one time. And I don't know.
For sale?
No, it doesn't say that.
Well, it is, it is the class-two license, but it specifically said, doesn't say for sale.
Class-two is for sale. You don't need a class-two license for repair.
I don't, but in this case, there's something.
It's clearly specifically said for sale.
This was what, this was what the property owner accepted, and if they should have argued it, that was the time to argue it. But the select board said limit of ten motor vehicles on property at any one time.
For a class-two license.
It doesn't say.
Motor vehicles must be displayed with visible for-sale signs on it. So that's why I'm saying the grandfathering is incomplete, it's grandfathered for sales arguably. I don't think it's grandfathered for repairs. And limited business doesn't allow automotive uses. So the only grandfathering they can hang their hat on is sales.
The license that you hold in your hand mentions repairs.
All we had, all we were presented with was evidence of sales. So that use is grandfather, agreed.
So you mean to tell me that a guy is gonna invest all this money to sell five cars? What is wrong with you?
The grandfather of the repairs did not need a permit, as I understand it. It was a grandfather use.
Sure.
So you didn't need, you didn't need a license from anybody to continue that business. But you, they did need a license to sell the cars.
Right.
So.
But were they doing repairs?
They were doing everything, there's car parts in that place that stuff taken, parts put back together.
That's how Jack did over there, was repairs.
So I'd say the grandfathering just extends to sales.
Hmm, no.
There's an argument to that.
That land, it's allowed, automotive is allowed in that district? Repair?
No.
No. Then how would he do that?
So we need, they were grandfathering, they were, they were, they were, they were grandfathering clause of the old Jack West.
When is application being made for a new license, is what I wanna know.
We have to get through this process first and then we go to the select board. So, I have some homework to do, but where, where are we at here?
Well, I know one thing, I don't wanna stick that lady with this property that she can't do nothing with it and lose everything she's got.
That's not true.
Yeah, well, that is true.
There are.
You didn't like it, why the hell didn't you buy it?
There are multiple uses allowed for that property in the limited business district.
I came to the board in the spring to get your clarification on what, what I could represent. And I've had a very interested person who I respect for his hard work, I respect for his following. So it seemed to me it would be logical to keep something that's always had autos of some sort there. I'm not going to run a business. My husband worked his heart out to improve that property. And Paul is another hard worker who will continue to improve the property. And I think he respects his neighbors there, he wants it to be happy for everybody. And I, who have waited since May or June, would like to see some finality on this project.
Well, my version of this is the proposed buyer is willing to work with this board and the neighbors to make this thing work. And again, I don't wanna see that lady get messed up that she can't do nothing with her property. And as long as I remember, that, that place sold cars and did car repairs.
I've had cars repaired there, okay, at Jack West, we used to have tractors repaired there.
Mike, the big argument that's coming in is the grandfathering of a business use. It's two years, and she did produce, the fact that they sold a couple of cars there in the two years. So as a business, it's allowed to exist. No, we're doing the fine tuning according to.
But then again, those cars probably were repaired right there.
Well.
Right.
Do you have anything that might say that you have repaired?
I could probably find something, but all I can tell you is my husband died. And when it, I agree, I brought in the document that showed the sales, cause that's what we asked.
Right.
I don't know if anybody would repair for his own work probably, but not.
He sold used cars there, so he would have, everybody has to repair a used car, not a new car.
But it's a matter, grandfathering is a matter of scale. And if putting the, everything that, putting the most that you could squeeze onto the lot is not consistent with the evidence of grandfathering that we have seen.
This is far from the most.
And Jim Maximowski knows exactly what that is to with the Medusco trucking.
What the hell's the Medusco trucking?
That is exactly the same case, Ken.
Well, I mean, I know, I knew coming into this that everybody was going to think back to when Lesko had it. And we all realized that the place that Paul has on the corner of East Street is full of cars, no question. So again, this plan shows that we're not intending to do that. Again, I left plenty of space for people to see.
What guarantees do we have that he'll abide by it?
You have the guarantee that you get from anybody that ever comes before this board.
Well, he said it.
So there's.
But, yeah, I understand, but if he, if you cut it down to fifteen to ten there, I personally am good with that. If you can produce anything that he would do, repairs some cars, even the ones that he sold would be monumentally helpful.
You know, even.
We should ask me that in June.
Okay, if there were bills and repairs and stuff like that, that you may have, you may not.
Now, Randy, you could work it out and come back, and I think, once we see the refinement.
You'll make it in two weeks or more?
How many of the cars that you've got parked on East Street would be parked here right now?
Only four, what's the four? I have double cars.
How much business do you turn away every day because there aren't any room to park cars?
October second or October sixteenth, those are the two choices.
Because of space.
I'll start with the second, and if I have a problem, I'll let you know, I checked my schedule, I don't have it with me.
Soon as possible.
Yeah, it'll be October second, we'll come back. And the only thing that she's going to be able to provide as far as repairs go is parts receipts.
Yeah, right. What else can you?
Because you don't, when you're, when you're selling cars, you don't bill yourself.
Right.
For the repairs you did. Buy the parts and you put them in the envelope that says this is, I put this much money in this car.
But you know it, cause you sell, everybody has to, your used car, you either have to send them out to repairs or you repair them yourself.
Right.
There's no such thing as buying a used car and just throw it on the lot and.
I'd just like to make a comment to the young people in the audience. In a nutshell, this is distilling down what zoning is all about. The rights of the individual to do what they think they wanna do, and the rights of the community, i.e. the neighbors, to kind of have some say too. So it is a delicate balance between the rights of the property owner and the rights of the community. And that's where we are now, so you're part of that balance again.
Hey, Jim, you know, I've been listening to your whole conversation here, and you're comparing Jack Lesko's operation of repairs based.
operation of repairs, basically, for fifty years, to Jack who was repairing his own antique cars and reselling at the time before he passed away. So, you know, you gotta take into consideration, I, I know that's what your point was, what you were trying to make, Joe. And John, you were saying, well, what was there and what's there now? We gave the permit for ten cars because he cleaned the place up, and he kept most of his repairs inside the garage because you didn't know that he was repairing them. And the couple that he did put outside were for sale, and I've driven by there myself a few times, and he really kept them...
Did you know the guy?
Yeah.
Did you have any dealings with him?
No, no, I just knew him from the car show.
But you, you, you visited the place and you actually stained them repairing cars?
Yeah, he was repairing cars in everyone, when he was still alive.
That's good enough for me.
We, we believe he was repairing cars.
Yeah.
But we would like to see some kind of a proof of that, so that there's, you know, we're, we're not like, well, your word against my word versus against anybody else's word, I mean, some kind of a question, John said.
Is that gonna take a selectman's word?
No, I, you know, I got a, I got a couple antique cars myself, so I periodically talked to Clark's Junkyard, Charlie Clark up there, and her husband, before he passed, I spoke with him two times, on a couple of the antique cars that I have. So, you know, it, it was a hobby as much as it was a business for us.
I, I was in that building a bunch of times with Jack Carshles, and I, he had cars apart fixing them.
But I mean, even if you have any witnesses, if you can't find any repair bills, but just Johnny's a witness, he's a witness, he witnessed it.
It's kind of a question of turnover, how many cars turn over on East Street property a week? How many come and leave?
I have about, uh, I would say about five to six cars leaving, and I have about six of them coming.
So you've got more cars out there than you're working on?
Yeah, so I can't catch up, which is good, but, you know, we try to do the best we can.
Are there any abandoned cars there?
Well, we have a couple cars that people bought and then we fixed it, and then now they are nowhere to be found. So, I called them, I went through code system, they, they are all doing paperwork and everything, but we don't know what to do with those cars. I have three, four cars sitting on East Street, I'm just gonna junk it now because it's almost eight, nine months, I can't find these people. I call them, send them...
You can, you can file as an abandoned vehicle with the police department if you, they abandoned the car, and then you, you can get rid of them.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Right, file a thing with the police.
Clear up some of the congestion, that's why I asked you, how many in and out? It seems like you've got more there than in and out.
No, you, using the big jobs, they, they stay because sometimes, you know, I, I have about sixty percent of heavy work, forty percent is in and out, brake jobs, oil changes, flat tires or whatever, they go in and out, but then the big jobs, it takes us a week to restore, sometimes.
That lot you have is just too small for you.
Yes, it's too small for me.
Will this lot lighten up that lot?
Oh, yes, if I...
Are you just saying that, oh, yeah, or do you mean that?
No, no, I, I'm not trying to, you know, if the, to buy this place, I'm fifty years old. I don't want to start this from zero, I, I moved from New York, I sold all my gas stations, I came here just to slow my life down. But now, you know, at age fifty, I don't want to do this again. But whenever I pass by that place, I knew Jack also, and whenever, whenever I pass by that place, I see that place dead, dirty, and everything, I feel very bad. And when I met Linda, Linda said, you know what, Paul, uh, what do you think about this? I said, you know what, if you want me to buy it, you know what, I will buy it for you, I'll buy the place, and I'll, I'll try to make it look good for the town of Hadley, just like I did this place, I put a bunch of money in this place.
Well, I'll tell you something, if we approve this and you move, lighten up your place there by bringing stuff here, but if you end up doing this, like you got your place there, I'm gonna be one P.O. person.
No, no, it, it's not gonna happen, and then the neighbors that are all concerned about, uh, all this, which I, which I live there too, so I do understand their, their concern. But I'll be respectful to all these guys, and whatever they, they feel like they want me to do, I'll do that. If the lights are not good and they want a light that doesn't shine up in the window, I'll make sure they, it doesn't happen. Keep it clean, and...
Clean and organized, and then it's presentable.
Yes, that's what the plan is.
Okay. O.I.S., okay.
Why is this...
I'm gonna put it in the presentation, that's all. I just want to reference the right name, gentlemen.
Well, the asked ones, I gotta think after me.
John, you were asking about, John, you were asking about the guarantee that it would comply whatever we, we did agree on for the site plan. And we did advocate our responsibility for checking, uh, to the building inspector. But we did reserve the right to have an individual vote, so we could put a bond on if you see fit. Because you were kind of the one that didn't want to have a bond.
You know, I, I would give the people the benefit of the doubt, but what happened to Echolons there should never happen again. The spillover or things like that, that shouldn't happen.
Well, I can guarantee you that I know of two people who will be very quick to report any issues that are out of the line with this plan, and they're sitting there.
So you're gonna come back, if you're gonna come back in Tuesday, with lighting, the parking lines, um, delineate, ever drive parking and green space?
And the dumpster.
Oh, okay, yes.
So, if I could just ask, um, you know, one question about, you know, with people that will be sort of, you know, on guard in case the number of cars that are allowed are exceeded. So what is that number of cars that, that we can call somebody if it's exceeded on the lot?
So right now, it is...
It'd be the Board of Selectmen, they issued a class-two license.
You're asking for the number.
Is that right? Is that what you're looking for?
No, no, do you say they're gonna be vigilant in case the rules are overrun, but it's not clear, you know what those rules could be?
Okay, so right now, after coming to some compromise, we've got sixteen cars for the business and two cars for the house.
So as long as there's eighteen or less, everything is good?
Right.
If there's nineteen, then we can make a call.
I mean, but our argument before was that the license says ten cars on the property at any given time. It's, I mean, there's an argument to be made that that's ten cars period and not for sale.
That's ten cars is a class-two license.
That, that's a number you'll have to re, review with the Board of Selectmen. Well, David, I take that back, the Board of Selectmen has not issued a license yet.
Right.
Okay.
And, again, the license is for class-two, that's a class-two license, which is the sale of cars. It's got nothing to do with anything else.
Well, you, and, and...
But again, there's an argument to be made to the, you know, contrary to what you're saying, it says ten cars on the property at any given time, period, not for sale.
Your question is a legitimate one, because it could be a shell game, oh, no, this is for repairs, this is for sales. So we want a number.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look at my license.
Okay.
Mine says five cars. If it says five cars on my property at any one time, I gotta shut down the barbecue and I gotta shut down my office. Because I would very, very much exceed that. So, it's pertinent to the license and nothing else.
Right, I agree with you a hundred percent, I had a...
Right, even the house there, which has had wonderful tenants for the last couple of years, they left for graduate school. I've been waiting until this is resolved to find new tenants. We usually have had one car on their area, but what's gonna happen if they have a guest and they have another car?
I don't think anybody's arguing about that.
That's exactly right. What we're concerned about, there was some concern about the neighbors when he had the cars in the Bimbin gas station. He was, he was moving his cars on the adjacent property, and they, you know, they appealed to me, and I said, we cannot enforce.
I think it's really hard, because it, it's always been a car of a here place. I really was optimistic when I had a buyer who I felt worked as hard as my husband did, and they continued to improve it.
Just to worry on that, the second of October, we've got the PVPC coming in for usual PVC, you've broken the bylaw review, so you might be here for a while, and we won't...
Okay, so you'll take him?
We will definitely take, depending where, what walk-ins we have, but this may take more than a few minutes, so it'll probably be after, um, PVPC, okay.
Okay, and...
That's if you're ready.
I don't remember your name, but you want to see the revised plan at Town Hall?
Yes, please. And the next meeting is what date, and then can we decide on a time, or time period in which that will be filed?
Well, if you, if you give me an email address, I'll make a PDF of this in the next couple of days when I revise it and send it to you.
Great, can I have that done?
Sure.
And get a copy, you see. I had, I had it, I had two emails from, uh, the clerk today about people coming in looking for the plans.
I'll get it to them.
Okay. The, uh, someone else. So we're gonna continue this here into October second, like I was telling Randy, it'll probably be later as opposed to earlier because we could PVPC, County Valley Planning Commission coming in for a routine monthly meeting, so it may be a lot, we'll get to you that night. Okay, um, yeah, okay. And that's it for this, okay. Yes, everybody have a business?
Okay.
Any, that's a monkey business. Oh, oh, just a quick update, the Gazette.
You get that square a little bit?
Half square away. I went to see the accountant and gave her a copy of one of these invoice statements and explained everything to her, and she went through the bills, it found that we had made bills to the payment, but we weren't credited to it, the Gazette put it against somebody else. And so...
Boy, you're in town.
Sounds like a hot, right speed for this.
Yeah, against other departments in town. Anyway, long story short, uh, the Gazette has at least straightened out up to sixty days, uh, our invoicing. I'm gonna make a copy of this and give it to the accountant and tell her this is the latest disaster. But we went from owing them close to two thousand dollars to now only owing them seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Do you think that's right?
No, we should owe them zero.
Oh.
She said she would take care of it because she wants specific things. So, that's just information. So we will see you next Tuesday night, seven o'clock, right here.
I have nothing else.
Okay, do we have any progress with Nyherd Secretary to do our minutes?
I'm getting her doing decisions right now.
Okay, what about the minutes, how many months are we back?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Probably, more than a couple.
More than a couple?
Almost the first of the year. Okay, um, I'll go see something else when you're ready. It'll come to me, of course, may afterwards. Okay, motion to adjourn?
Side to side.
All's favor?
Uh-uh.
Meeting is, thank, uh, meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, Drew and John.